If you were joining us at our February 17 meeting, please take none of the exits around room in case of emergency and now join us as we reaffirm our loyalty to the American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, I want to thank my colleague Ms. Dexter for running a wonderful meeting last time while I was away. And it was a pleasure to watch it while I was on vacation and realize I was done where it was warm while it was cold up here. The first time on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Hetchincken-Statsburg Storage. This is the former PDQ building. Mr. Turner is here to represent the applicant. To summarize, again briefly, because we've been entertaining this project for a while, the DEC is requiring the relocation of a building that was previously approved in the rear, not visible from Route 9, forward about 10 feet or to the west about 10 feet. This necessitates a little bit of changes, also relocating a rain garden and also reducing it by two parking spaces and changing the entrance slightly. I believe that the board was prepared to take action tonight, but through misunderstanding, our section of 108-9.4 site plan elements requires that what we approve be plans that are stamped by a land surveyor, licensed PE, landscape architect, or other qualified consultant. And we didn't have that. We were proceeding with just a sketch. So I contacted Mr. Turner today to see if we could get plans, but their civil engineer has not started the process of converting the change, the new ones, into a CAD design, I guess.
Correct. Basically, what was happening is I got the email and I misinterpreted what it was stating in regards to the request for the final, because usually I end up by getting the public hearing closed first, so that way I have all the comments. I didn't get the final comments back from the Department of Planning and Development, so I had no idea if they had any changes.
Of course, none.
And I didn't have anything from the fire chief, so I didn't want to submit anything until I'd gotten those things.
It makes sense, because it's a miscommunication. Usually Ms. Moss requires that we have stamped plans to begin with.
Correct.
Because we're working through previous approval, and it was relatively minor in terms of what we were thinking of it as, because it's required by the DEC. She lets you kind of proceed that way, but now we paying the cost of it, because I would have liked to have taken action tonight. But I don't believe there's any other new information from the last meeting. And Victoria, any comments?
I was talking to Donna. Did we open the hearing?
May I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yes. Any comments?
No, no comments.
Any comments from the board?
No comments.
Okay. So what I can, any comments from the public? I don't think so. Look like you're all here as applicants and for the future. Then what we could do tonight is close the public hearing. We have 62 days by statute in which to take action. We can just put this on the agenda for the next meeting in March. As soon as you submit plans, then we can go ahead and, we have a resolution, I believe, already prepared, it's missing some information about the date of the plans.
I'll make that a motion.
Is that acceptable, Victoria, to close the public hearing while we're still waiting for plans?
Right. So the...
Is that considered new information, so I need to keep this open?
I mean, I'd prefer you keep it open, just because what you have is a sketch and you don't have the actual plan set or an actual plan set before you. But...
Just popped into my brain when I was saying that, that we are supposed to keep hearings open in case, to receive information, and we don't have the submission yet, so we should keep it open. Fine. Make it a motion to continue this to the March, I believe it's the third?
Second.
Second?
Second.
March 2 meeting?
Yep.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight.
It makes no practical difference as far as timing.
No, no, no. It's still the same time. I'll just have to open the public hearing, that's all. Well, this is a continued public.
Is there anything that could be done? Because I know right now our client is trying to finance, you know, close his financing, you know, for the project. Having the resolution was one of the items, and he was hoping to get it closed by Friday. Is there anything that I can obtain from the planning board that would allow him to provide something to the bank itself, so that way they know that all you're waiting for is a final set of plans?
Would a draft work?
That's what I'm wondering, if there's a way of getting a draft, just so that way he has something, so that way they know that we're in the process of wrapping this thing up, and in two weeks, they'll be receiving then the final.
I mean, we're legally prescribed from saying, from me saying how we'll vote in advance.
Correct.
But...
We have a draft, I believe we have a draft resolution.
We have a draft resolution. We have a draft resolution.
It's a public document that...
We could certainly send it to you, and I could put a cover letter just saying that it'll be on the agenda for the first meeting in March, and that there were no negative comments from the board. I can't say how we'll vote, but I could...
Was there anything that did come back from the Department of Planning and Development? Because I, as I said, I didn't receive anything, and I know I did speak with the fire chief, but he said he hadn't done his review yet. Just curious if anything had come back from him as well.
No, and we definitely, we have the county planning, it's a matter of local concern with no comments. But we didn't receive anything from the fire chief yet?
Stanford?
Correct.
There is a letter on my desk.
Okay. We should take a look at it, see if there's any comments that would require you to change the plans.
Correct.
Which is why we need to keep the public hearing open. With your forbearance, members of the audience? Just so everybody else knows, whether watching on TV or here, our administrative assistant was out for five months, I believe.
Yeah.
And then I was away for two weeks, so we were a little out of sorts this evening, but if that way, Donna's just getting back into the quick of things. And she's still going for therapy sessions, which is why she was...
And it's a very heavy agenda.
It is. There was a lot concerning what we've been having lately. In the meantime, I should also then bring up, just because it's housekeeping, I'd like to write a resolution thanking Anne Marie for her service, because that's not her job, what she stepped in to fill. I'd also like to, in the same resolution, thank the secretary to the supervisor for all the minutes that she did for us, because they were really good, and it, there's no big burden for Donna to come back to, to have to do all the minutes. So I have a resolution prepared for us to vote on, to send to the supervisor of the town board, and the head of personnel can go into their files. Thank you.
Can we vote on it now?
I think it's one you've already seen. It's October 19, 15.
That would be an older one.
Yeah.
I'll call him.
Okay.
It's okay. I'll call, I can contact the fire chief there.
So yes, if I could receive a draft, that would be greatly appreciated.
Can you send that to him, Victoria?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll send a separate email to you that you can use as a cover letter.
And I've let our civil engineer to proceed forward with making his, you know, changes on his drawings. Mine have already been made, they're just sitting there, you know, kind of waiting.
Okay.
Because he'll also have to go through his stormwater report, just to pick up any things, because we did reduce down the amount of asphalt that we had by shifting the parking lot. And also, and I don't know if it's, how he's going to address the reconfiguration of the bioretention area, but that gets changed. I don't know if it changes in volume, or if it's going to increase, so that way it can hold more volume, or I don't know.
Right. So the sooner you can submit those plans, the better, because that gives the planning board engineer time to review those stormwater changes.
Correct. I hope to have everything by the first part of next week, because he said that he can get on to it fairly quickly, so being that today's Wednesday.
We're reducing the amount of pervious, correct?
Correct.
So wouldn't there be less run...
Well, I'm just saying, it's, when he reconfigures it, it might have a different shape.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct.
I said it's going to have a different volume than what the original one had had.
Yes, yes, yes. The DEC wanted it relocated.
Correct.
Right, sorry.
Because we're able to kind of squish it up against the driveway area more, and so we're pulling ourselves out of the buffer area with the grading, so.
Okay. Yes, the sooner we can get the plans, the better, and I'll write up a cover letter for you tomorrow.
That'd be great.
And email it right to you.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a change of use and a sign permitting relocation for the location of the current sign from Malkarn Professional Center. Most of the locals know this as the Roe Building. I believe Naveen Sedaris is here to represent the applicant tonight. Come on up. In essence, I believe that what's happened is, is there's a formal medical use in the building, and that's going to convert to retail. The retail, as I understand it, is a shop, smoke shop?
It's an electronic cigarette shop.
Electronic cigarettes, that's it.
Yeah.
And the current sign is out of compliance.
Correct.
It's too high, and so, because it also has a visibility issue, whenever there's the landscaping that should be at the site just to the north, adjacent, you're going to relocate the sign as well, correct?
Correct.
And anything else you'd like to add?
I just wasn't certain of the dimension, because there is the project to do the sidewalks, and I couldn't really be exactly specific about that for that reason, but I think I went in far enough from the property to the south and from Route 9, so if it is a matter of making a small adjustment, I think it can be accommodated.
The, what Ms. Sedaris is referring to, for the audience, is that the town was successful in applying for a Transportation Assistance Program grant of $650,000. It's being designed right now. Some changes to Route 9. It will affect this parcel, and it goes all the way down to basically the drive-in. There will be a complete sidewalk, there'll be a sidewalk that will have a retaining wall that will actually go over the pond where the antique center is. It's the engineers who are just charged with designing the project just completed their surveying and are in the process of doing it right now. There was a webinar, I believe, today with the town board. So what will happen is, is that we normally would require, if there's a site plan change, a sidewalk in this area, but because the town's going to be installing it with federal funding, there's no reason to have the store owner, or the site owner, I should say, do something that the town's going to do anyway. So, and you relocated the sign, the sign's out of the DOT right of way. All work for the TAP project will be done within the DOT right of way, because it's administered through the DOT as well, because it's a federal grant. So I think we should be okay. Because this is also a site plan amendment, we would normally set a public hearing, but Ms. Moss has recommended that we not have to hold a public hearing on this one. So we refer this to county planning, which by law has three days to respond. It went out on the 11th, but apparently they just received it today, so we can't take action tonight, because we don't have county planning's comments. I imagine there're going to be no comment, a matter of local concern with no comments. I did contact Ms. Levonway, who reviews Hyde Park for the county, on Friday, and she hadn't received them yet, so that's why I knew something might be in the works. And she just called today to say they just got it today, and she didn't have time to review it. So what I'll do is, we'll put this on the agenda for the first March meeting, and then get you through. In the first place, I believe, this, do we need to type the action tonight? Yes?
I believe we did that at the last meeting.
That's what I thought. I thought I saw that you did at the last meeting, because this has already been referred. So any comments from, any further comments from the board on this application?
Just looking at the site plan, I think logically it might make more sense to move the sign down to the south corner, so you're not losing two spots. If there's a car here, you're going to be kind of jammed in, because it's not...
Ms. Sedaris, can you see what we're talking about?
I think I understand.
I know why, I think I know why you put the sign where it is. Mr. Oliver was suggesting relocating it to the finals, so you keep these two intact, because this would be a harder one to back in and out of. But do you want to explain why you, this is the preferred location?
Well, the property to the south of the parcel has their sign pretty close, and I didn't want to, you know, cover them or, you know, infringe on them, so since we have plenty of parking on the site, I wanted to give them some space, and maybe we can have something planted in a good way.
So, we had actually, when we met offline, it was a good call, because we did the same thing. That's funny.
Thank you for the explanation.
Sure.
She had pictures of the site next door, so we could see that it would occlude the vision.
That makes sense.
Actually, of both, when you're coming from other directions, so that's what was worked out. By the way, it may be that county will make comments, like add more landscaping, whatever, because the county's, I'm not sure how much they're aware of the TAP as well. So, yes, Ms. DiNapoli, did you, do you have a comment?
I was just looking for the landscape plans around the sign.
I wasn't, I didn't suppose, I didn't propose anything at the moment, until we have a finalized plan of how the sidewalks are going to come through, because I can think of 100 things, but maybe they won't work until I see what's coming through, and then we'll work with it. Yes, we want to make the place look better, but I don't know yet how the sidewalk will impact.
Because of the way the grade changes, it's pretty steep where the flower beds are. They're not sure what kind of stabilization will be required, so that's basically it. And TAD thought it prudent to go ahead and allow them just to relocate the sign. Then, as they come back through with more tenants, we'll be able to then address the site plan element, any additional landscaping.
Thank you.
But that's a good call, too.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes. I just want to go on the record, and I know I'm the majority of one.
No.
I do not like mixed use by experience. The doctor and the smoke shop, I don't think, are going to coexist well.
There is no doctor there now.
Oh, there are no more dentists? There are not going to be any more dentists?
There is some medical to the rear of the site, I believe.
The rear of the site, there are a couple dentists that are well on in their years. We don't know how...
Yeah, no, I'm just, I mean, I've got experience with it.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. It's not...
They don't coexist well.
It's not in the same section of building. The front is only that front office.
Right. It's going into this section.
We have the same situation in the shopping center, where I have a part-time job, and there's a school way across the way, and it just totally does not exist, coexist with the rest of the shopping center.
Yeah. The way our code reads is, as long as the use is commercial, comma, general, it's allowed in this district, which covers a lot.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying...
And you're right. In the case of Park Plaza, where you work, customers and deliveries are impacted by when the buses and the cars with the parents and drop-offs are there. So I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. I'm just against it, and I don't think it's a good practice.
In this case, you're, you're converting it to retail, basically, because the front medical's all gone, it's been gone for a while.
Yes. Yes. All the centers have absorbed all the physicians. They can't hold a practice on their own, so we're trying to see what could fit in the area, and that would be low impact and not leave the building vacant.
Correct. So can we put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll make sure that county... They would technically still have more time in which to respond, but I'll, I've already contacted Ms. Levonway. She knows we're looking for this, so we should be able to take action on the second.
All right.
All righty?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Is it a continuance, or is that...
Just, there's no public hearing, so we're just going to put it on the agenda, right?
Did the board, I wasn't at the last meeting. Did the board make a motion to waive the public hearing? If not, let's do that tonight.
I don't believe you, did you make a motion to waive the public hearing at the last meeting? I don't believe you did.
No. We just had discussion.
Right, we have a letter from TAD.
We could just have a discussion. I don't think we did any...
We didn't write. They didn't take any actions, so would you like me to ask for that motion?
Yes.
Make it a motion to waive the public hearing for Malkarn Professional Center.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is Kinder House Montessori. And this is sort of an odd duck.
I agree.
Ms. Will, it's nice to see you again. Congratulations on running a successful enterprise all this time.
Thank you.
So you're, this is for Kinder House Montessori, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to state your name into the record?
It's Maya Will.
And you're basically taking your, you're required to have a special use permit in order to change the operation of the facility to not just a school preschool, but a daycare center as well.
Right. It's kind of complicated. Let me explain. When we started, we were a nursery school, and then we added an elementary, grades one through three, and we ran through the Department of Education, New York State Department of Education, which doesn't regulate the preschool program. So last year, we discontinued the elementary, and now in order to have a full-day preschool program, which we've had since 2004, we're put in a daycare classification. So technically, nothing is changing. We're operating the same hours with the same staff, the same number of children, but because we don't have that elementary component anymore, we're considered a daycare center. We're not going to have infants, we don't have to make any changes to the building. So really, I feel kind of silly, because nothing is changing, as far as, you know, we're concerned, but they are, OCFS, which is Office of Children and Family Services, is requiring me to show proof of zoning that we are permitted to have a daycare center, which technically, I suppose, is what we've been doing all this time as well, with an elementary, but now there's no longer the elementary.
There were, there were two things coupled, and since you've delinked one, you now fall into, you need additional paperwork, basically, from this board.
Yes.
Okay. Unfortunately, because you are on a county road, and all special use permits must be referred to county planning, we have, we have a resolution typing the action, which basically says that this is a type 2, because there's no changes whatsoever. So I understand that this isn't going to change the way people drop off anything.
Well, if anything, there's probably less traffic, because we don't have the buses. We used to have buses from probably every district, from, you know, Kingston, Rhinebeck, Red Hook, Spack and Kill, Arlington, and we don't have the busing anymore, because it's, you know, younger children, so it may have less, less impact.
Do you have any questions?
I actually...
First, from the consult, from the consultants, Ms. Podora.
I misunderstood. I thought there was going to be a small expansion as part of the daycare, so the resolution has an incorrect clause.
There is no expansion.
I think it's the second and the third clause. Just cross it out.
That sounds like grammatical.
What ages does your facility... It's 18 months through kindergarten. Okay.
Do you have the resolution?
There was an addition put on several years ago. I don't know.
Right. Mr. Andros walked that through for Mr. Golden during that time. Do we have that resolution?
It's due.
We do not have that resolution.
Oh.
Can I print it?
I told you to come today.
Yeah.
Yes, this afternoon about 4:00, when you were at physical therapy. I'm sorry, I didn't print one out. It's okay. Okay. We're glad to have you back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This will take us a moment to print it out. Yeah. So in the meantime, if you'll be patient, Victoria, would you like to recuse yourself, and we'll go ahead and do it?
Sure.
Because the...
I'm recusing myself?
Two items away, we have an application for a site plan waiver for a residence owned by Tim and Victoria Kane, our esteemed colleague to my left. I'm officially calling up Mr. Pickett, the planning board alternative. The site plan waiver is requested because, as always, the home is located in the statewide area of scenic significance, requiring site plan review. However, the site is not visible from either historic site or the river, and we do have a wave, a recommendation that we waive site plan by the zoning administrator. Anybody have any comments or questions?
No.
Who has, who has this resol, who wants to make a comment, Ms. Kane?
I actually...
Come up to the microphone, please.
She can't call.
She can't. She's the applicant.
It's so weird to be on this side of it. I don't...
Try to use influence on him, see.
No. Never, never on Mr. Murphy. So I'm Victoria Kane of Beadart Place in Hyde Park, and in, you know, the interest of being, playing all the cards on the table, I'm right behind Hyde Park Elementary School.
Correct.
So isn't that a historic site?
It's on, no, it's on the National Registry. The statewide area of scenic significance is formed specifically for the Vanderbilt and Roosevelt Estates.
Okay.
Along with the river. Anything viewed from those three?
I just didn't want to...
Now, what you're saying is, is just so fun for you to know, because you are next to an historic site, if we were going to hold a public hearing, we weren't going to waive it, then you would be a type 1 action, because you're next to the historic site. But you're not, because we're not taking, we're not taking, we're not going to review, so we just have to do the waiver.
And also, Hyde Park Elementary has solar panels.
It does.
On their side facing me, so...
Well, are any of them going to shine on the river?
No.
No, they won't shine on the river. I'm not, I'm not close to the river. All right. Thank you very much.
So, Chris, you have this resolution?
I do.
Oh, Diane? Thank you.
Okay. Site plan waiver for the town, code section 108-9.4C2, February 17, 2016, resolution 16-12.
We're doing Kane right now. We're doing Kane, we're doing Kane.
Oh, you said it. Got it.
Whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the town of Hyde Park's planning board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the building department on 12/17/2015, and per the request to the planning board dated January 31, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett.
You didn't help me, Joe.
Ms. Kane, you're back up, because we're back now into Kinder House Montessori, and we got the resolution ready.
Victoria, did you make the changes?
I did.
You got rid of the, okay.
Resolution typing action, referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Kinder House Montessori, resolution number, do we have a number? No?
To be filled in.
To be filled in.
16-6.
Oh.
Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type 2 action under SECR, two, directs its secretary to refer the site plan set to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239M of the general municipal law. Can I get a second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're referring just the special use permit application to the county?
That's all we have.
Well, should we refer, because there are no changes to...
I think we should probably include the old site plan in the, in the set, so that
I think we should probably include the old site plan in the, in the set, so that there's context, and it's technically a site plan amendment.
Right, so do we have extra copies of the old site plan? Doubtful. Do you know if you, do you know if you have any, if Mr. Golden or you have any copies of the site plan?
I'm sure. I think I have them. I think it even says site plan.
Yeah, we just need one to refer to the county, because I, I don't...
I don't know if it has the addition on it, though.
Well, so if you don't have, the, the most current one's going to be on file with the Planning Board. You can probably come in, take it to the copy shop, make the copies, bring them back, and then they can mail them out.
It will have the addition, because we approved the addition. Mr. Andros had to do the limbo to get it through.
Okay, I remember, yes.
So, unfortunately, so the reason why I want to make sure we send a complete package is the county, if they don't have a complete, can kick it back, and then that resets when they do get it, they have another thirty days, and I think you want to get going on this, I'm assuming, so...
Yeah, technically, I'm shut down.
Oh.
And a lot of families in Hyde Park are without daycare right now.
Yikes.
Wow.
Okay, do you have time to come in tomorrow to look, to make copies?
I would do it first thing after.
Okay, thank you very much, and...
Yeah, a lot of pressure to...
We will let, I'll call, Ms. Levonway. Heather, fortunately, we're friends, and she got married on my property, so, before she worked for the county, so I will call and ask her as well to do an expedited review, and she'll probably, I think she'll probably receive it early next week, so we'll schedule this also for the March 2 meeting, March 2 meeting, and she'll be able to get you done, okay?
Okay.
Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. Are we, are we having a public, wait, are we having a, excuse me, are we going to set a public hearing? It's a, it's a special permit, so it can't be waived?
Then, we don't have, do we have a waiver for, from TAD, recommendation?
You can't, she can't recommend waiver of a special use permit?
Oh, that's right, we have to hold one. Megan, a motion to set a public hearing for March 2 for the special use permit.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
What, what does that mean exactly?
We have to open, open a public hearing, like you saw us do earlier tonight, people can comment, but I don't think you're going to have any comments.
So basically, I have to come back here on the second, then do I go to the county, or that's coming to you?
No, no, you, you, come tomorrow, take the file, make copies, bring the original back, then we will send them to county planning under, we have a referral package that has to, has to be sent from us. We send it, she'll review it, she sends back comments, and those comments will then be entered into the record. Hopefully, they'll be a matter of local concern, no comments, and we open a public hearing, people can speak, and assuming they don't, then we close it and take action and give you your special use permit.
All in the same meeting?
All in the same meeting.
Oh.
I forgot, it's state law that special use permits do require public hearings. It's because the uses, when you have a special use permit, it means it's not permitted as of right, so you're kind of going a little bit beyond zoning. It's just because of the district you're in, that's all. Okay.
Okay, thanks. I'll be here in the morning.
Thank you, everyone, for getting through this complicated process. The next item on the agenda is Speedway, and we have the applicant's representative Basically, and this is for the conversion of the former Hess to Speedway, as I understand it. Hess has spun this off, but it's still operating the same way, it looks like?
Precisely, Mr. Chairman, and just for the record, my name is Daniel Laub with the firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader, filling in for Neil Alexander this evening, who is traveling. And yes, essentially, the Hess Express locations were purchased by Speedway, and so this is basically just a branding changeover.
And as a consequence, they're going to need, the last time around with Hess, they looked to us to give, to use our discretionary authority to increase the size of letters based on the speed of the road or the size of the building, et cetera. Because, because this area of the road has a high speed, and because you're also coming around from a curve, we granted everything last time, then they'll also need variances from the ZBA in a couple of places. But because the ZBA must grant by law the minimum variance possible, we need to grant what we can first, so that the ZBA would then grant the smallest possible. So they haven't applied to the ZBA yet. You saw the extensive analysis provided by the applicant's attorney to support, in support of the request. At the offline meeting, I have to say, I didn't think it was such a big deal. I am happy, myself, that you're not leaving the green trim on, because with the red Speedway and the green trim, it looked permanently Christmas.
A little too Christmasy.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I did mention to Mr. Alexander, as well as Mr. Lautenbacher, that I thought the S was actually ugly, but I understand it's the corporate brand with those shadows, so I, it, to me, there's not really any issue. Ms. Podora, any comments?
So, I'm just looking for some clarification, because some of the plan sheets didn't have the dimensions, and they may have been elsewhere. So do you just want to go through each of the signs and tell us what you're asking for as far as sign bonuses?
So the, well, you know, your email came this evening, so I got, I got the final If you look on the sheet, which is six of six, and it talks about the non-illuminated badge sign, that would be the one that's above the doorway. So the dimensions I have for that are, and so the, what's called out are the dimensions of the sign, and then you had requested the actual dimensions of the logo itself.
Yes.
Right?
So I have thirty-one inches wide by twenty-three and five sixteenths high.
Can you just say twenty?
What's that?
Twenty-three and five.
It'd be so much easier if we worked in decimals, right?
So it was thirty-one wide, twenty-three, five sixteenths tall.
Right.
Okay.
And, and then, so if you go to the next sheet, which is, it's, for some reason, it's one of one, and is this for the monument sign, for the, the...
Uh-huh.
So that, if you, so if you look on the left, the logo was called out in height, but not in width.
Mm-hmm.
So as it turns out, that, the S, is the same dimensions as what I just, what I just gave, so it's thirty-one inches wide, and you'll see that on the left, it's twenty-three and five sixteenths high.
Okay.
So that's the S. The Speedway, the actual name Speedway below it, it's called out in its height, and the width for that is thirty-two and three quarters. Just slightly wider than the, than the S, as you, as you can see.
Okay, so let me just explain to the board, because I know we have some new members. Under our code, the maximum height of a logo or a letter is ten inches in any direction. No, a similar graphic is ten inches in any direction, the maximum height of a letter is ten inches. And so the Planning Board has some discretion to issue a bonus if the sign is further back from the roadway. The idea under the zoning code is that all the buildings would be up front to the street, but we know that there's a lot of pre-existing conditions in the town, and having the very tiny letters set back is difficult to read. And so this gives the board some discretion, and so the board can grant one additional inch for every twenty feet a wall sign is set back from the primary accessway, and one additional inch for every twenty feet a logo on a wall sign is set back from its primary accessway. So they're here today to ask for the maximum bonuses that the Planning Board can grant. They're still going to need variances, so for instance...
We go to a max of sixteen?
Goes to a max of twenty-four.
I'm sorry, twenty-four, okay.
So, like, for instance, the gable signs here, gable end walls, they've asked for an eighteen-inch letter. It only is, it's over sixty feet from the roadway, so you can only give three inches of bonus if you decide to give the bonus. So they could, you could grant up to thirteen inches, then they need to go get a variance for the additional five inches.
And again, because the ZBA has to give the minimum, we have to act first before they can say the minimum that they, is required in is five inches.
And on the, on the...
Victoria, can I quickly ask, because under Hess they were given nineteen inches, that doesn't come into play at all?
They don't, because the findings for the Hess sign were very specific to the Hess, so for instance, one of the findings was that signs were only limited to two colors, to provide visual interest, without clutter. So some of the findings are going to be the same, I mean, the resolution is basically the same, but some of them are not, because these signs have more than two colors. There's yellow, there's black, there's red, there's white, so you're going to want to delete that finding.
In addition, the variance doesn't go with the gable end wall, it goes, it's for the specific sign, since the sign's being removed, they have to seek a new variance for it.
Yeah, the, the board made findings about the height and the type font being readable, and this is a whole different...
A little bit different than the footprint of a building.
Right, and I want to add that Victoria's correct, but again, there are three reasons why we can, one is the size of the building, so if we could only, if you were limited to ten-inch letters, and the building were, say, pretty big, you couldn't read it, it would look sort of silly. So that was one consideration, because Victoria and Chan and I were all on a committee when we tweaked the sign code to make it a little bit more business-friendly this way. The other is speed. When you read all those sign manuals, the faster you are, the larger letters you need to be readable. And then the last, I believe, was...
Well, if it's, if the symbol or graphic has special aesthetic merit.
Aesthetic merit.
So like a large mermaid, or something beautiful.
We're just trying to think of something like the Children's Medical Group, when they had the kite, because the kite tail made it way too big. This way, we would be allowed to make it, to approve as much as we could, put it that way. So, anyway, anybody have any other questions?
Are these items, were they on the site plan? This ice machine and this...
Good call. That's something that Ms. Moss has communicated to you, the site plan, as approved, doesn't show an ice machine, since you're going through a site plan amendment.
Oh, yes.
You need to show that. Also, you need to show, I believe there's the tank refueling, is that what that is?
And there's also a air station, I don't know if that was on the site plan or not, but there's one there, and I don't see on there.
Okay, I think the, we'll check, see about the air station, I thought that was on the site plan, but I know that the ice machine wasn't.
I know it's not shown on this, on their paperwork here.
I thought the air station was, as for the ice machine and the propane, I'll have to see, because I think those were installed by Hess, I'm not precisely sure that Speedway necessarily wants to keep them.
Oh.
So I have to, I have to confirm.
Okay, if they...
So either way, well, we'll either, if we're keeping them, we amend the site plan, if not, then, then they're removed, I'll have to confirm that.
The applicant has applied for site plan amendment approval, in any event, because they're amending the elevations, the building elevations.
Right. Any other comments or questions? Did you want to take them?
Can I just?
Please.
It's a color question. How come the multitude of colors?
It's...
Brown, red, yellow?
With multitude of colors with a guard to the signage, or the, the building itself, or...
The freestanding sign, do you mean?
Well, the signs, you know, and how you have it on...
The yellow, the white is for diesel, and...
I'm sorry?
This is for diesel.
Oh, for diesel.
Yeah, the, the yellow is for diesel, and actually, you know, I had a chance tonight to kind of come up Route Nine, and I actually noticed that the Speedways were all very consistent on sort of calling out diesel, it's, it's, not all gas stations have it these days, unfortunately, people do, you know, it's, it's sort of a, a mark for people to, to get it, and most stations that I saw that had diesel had some sort of special color to kind of call it out, including the Speedways. And then I think as for the red, I think the, as the chairman pointed out, I think we were actually reducing the amount of color, trying to, you know, sort of, it's actually a little bit muted, you know, keeping the brown of the existing building and, and features, and taking out the green, and, and just sticking with the corporate red.
Thank you. So, on, on the freestanding sign, we're not...
We can't take action yet.
Right, so you're not requesting any, we can't grant any bonuses on the freestanding sign, but the sign that was installed does not match the approved freestanding sign, and so I know there was an issue with the dimensions.
Right.
So that's something that I think we should talk about before the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Alexander is aware of this, as Mr. Lautenbacher.
Yeah.
You can either seek a variance from the ZBA for basically an as-built, or there are ways to, I think Ms. Moss sent you a suggestion for ways to add some architectural details that reduce the overall square footage of the sign.
Right, right.
So there's some avenues to pursue there, and I think it's always better to not have to seek a variance from the ZBA personally, but that's up to you. So tonight, all we'd be doing would be granting the dimensional increases that we're allowed to, and because we can't approve a sign until you get the variance, because the S is too wide and Speedway's too wide, we can't do anything about the freestanding one. So do you have all that information already filled in?
So I, I took notes. I can come back in a little bit, and I'll update this.
Okay, then if you don't mind surrendering the desk there for a moment, and you don't mind going to correct the resolution, we'll get the rest of the waivers done.
Not a problem at all, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you and have you here. The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver request for, can you pronounce it for me?
Loyas.
Loyas? By the way, pretty house.
Thank you.
Oh, no, no, very pretty house, I was impressed when I saw the plans. I think everybody was impressed by it. This is one of the empty lots down there at the end of, okay, great. So we're, you're not in a sass, but you're actually located adjacent to a historic property.
Which was a surprise to me.
You can't see the property from where you are, but Mr. Heliker's site goes all the way back in, that's why, and it's a landmarked property. So we have a recommendation from the zoning administrator, anybody have any questions of the applicants who are patient enough to wait all night? Generally speaking, you don't have to come to these, I should have told you, or someone should tell you, unless you find it thrillingly interesting to sit here before the Planning Board, so, who has this application?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Christine D. Loyas?
Loyas.
Loyas. 6165-01-049554, 39 Hudson Drive, site plan waiver. Town code section 108-9.4C2, whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Christine D. Loyas on January 28, 2016, and whereas, construction of a new single-family home will change the appearance of the property, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as submitted on January 7, 2016, to the Building Department, and per the request of the Planning Board dated January 28, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you new to Hyde Park?
No.
You already live here?
Yeah.
I was going to say welcome, but welcome to your location, and good luck with the house.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, I think we have, yes, you're here for two signs, one is for Earth Goods Market, the other is for Fixed Tech Repair. I'm going to turn the table over to you, turn it over to you for a moment.
Hello, how are you? I'm Nancy Forrest, I'm with Gloody Signs, and I am here representing both Earth Goods and Fixed. Earth Goods, I don't think we have any issues with.
Nope.
And Fixed, there was a question on the double line of copy. First, I'll tell you, I was asked, Fixed is a nice young couple opening up a tech repair service. The majority of what they do is actually repairing cell phones, the screens, yeah.
Wow.
A very good thing, because oftentimes, you know, people just don't bother, you know, they'll get repaired, you need a battery, or you go into Sprint or whatever, and, you know, they might do something, but a lot of people buy them at Best Buy, and they don't do anything. So it's nice, you drop your phone, crack the screen, you know, you can go in and, you can just get screens on them, just have to have people that can do it. She also, if you'll give me one second, I'll tell you, there are a couple other items that, that's, that's pretty much the, what they do the majority of. They also do iPad repairs, and laptops, tablets. Another good one, I think, is great, is game consoles. They repair game consoles. Their hours tentatively at this point, Monday through Saturday, will be nine to nine, that's what they're thinking, and then maybe a few hours on Sunday, but like any new business, you know, they'll start, and then they'll see what really, what really works for them. So I don't know, do you want to do Earth Goods first?
In case you're wondering, as you know, I always like to take the opportunity to have any new business give a spiel about what they're doing here, in case people are watching, because I know a lot of people do watch, so, since it said tech repair, I kind of got a clue to it, but, so, what's, for discussion tonight, we're prepared to take action on the Earth Goods. We don't have a resolution prepared, because the Planning Board hadn't weighed in, and I needed to make sure I knew where everybody else was going. TAD was concerned, Ms. Moss was concerned, because we require design unity in shopping centers, and all the signs have similar color, the font styles are different, which is one way to achieve design unity, but this would be the only one that has two different lines of text. I didn't think it would be a big deal, but I would have to write the resolution differently, because if you recall, to prevent the applicant from having, from having to write, or from having us to write the resolutions, listing the size of the building, setback, et cetera, and how many feet it was, we gave a blanket approval by resolution, so that any letters along, for this building, along that panel, could be sixteen inches max. That's what they all are, basically, so...
Well...
Ms. Forrest had proposed one that was sixteen inches, and then one that the height of the Fixed is fourteen and then inches, and then the tech repair is ten inches, right?
Yeah, what I'd like to, if I could just say, on the behalf and why we did this, the word Fixed is...
Oh, I understand why you did it. I understand why you did it.
And they are on one of the extremely narrow storefronts. When that shopping center was first built, I got taken to small claims court for button up to somebody, just the way the building's built. You go so far, and then, you know, when you first set it up, and you've got X amount of stores, and then all of a sudden, one store's going to split into two, and when you have kind of a distinguished-looking front with a lot of cornices and things, you know, you're over here. When we attempted to put it on one line, it really totally gets lost, but if you look at CVS, like, I mean, I know theirs are tall or whatever, but it still runs within the same height, top and bottom of CVS, so I think over the years, you're, you're probably going to have some, I felt that it was important for them to put tech repair up, so people know what it is, otherwise it could be just about anything, and running it to be this tight, like even the animal hospital letters, you know, it, it just kind of runs off, like it's a sub, subtext to the animal hospital, because it's like, you know, this big, in order to fit on the very narrow storefront. So what we try to do is take into consideration the whole frontage, and, you know, keep it in an overall height of what, anything that might be there, and then just make it look as nice as we could.
So I just need to hear from the board, are you okay with the two lines?
Yeah, I think...
I think it's very smart.
Kind of, it's not big and long, you know, it's nice, it's compact.
I agree with you, because it's, if you ran it long, you'd, it'd be the length of the whole building.
Front, and it would be, have to be very narrow letters and very short, and it would look like, like I said, like print coming off.
Okay.[1703.72]
Not only is it smart, I think it will help them as a new business tremendously, because people will see what it is as opposed to just driving by and not paying any attention to it.
Right, absolutely.
Comments from Ms. Dexter, Mr. Oliver?
I like the double line. I like the, because when, at first I was like, what is Fixed T? And then this, at least I'd have a clue.
Right.
And I don't mind how it looks in relation to everything else. To me, the design unity on this is just that everything's up on that one fascia board and that they're red and white.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't think it stands out, you know, anything negative. I, I was brainstorming and thinking of maybe a, a way to add the tech repair in the window, but I think that would look more, uh, less unified than the way it does now, so.
I agree.
And it's also a little, little harder to read when it's on the band. That's where you're looking for it. And I personally try to keep them from putting too much in their windows. And I don't even think you allow neon in the windows anyway, right? So, so with the overhang, i- i- yeah, it would just be paper at its best, so.
So a question for you is, that I didn't understand. Right now, when the signs are lit at night, this is a white light behind, you're showing a red light behind. Was that just how the color came out here?
Yeah, no, it, she probably just clicked on the wrong one.
Because when I looked...
I frankly hadn't done the others.
This would be hard to read, it's just a glow of red, you don't see the white, the...
I thought Antonellus, I thought they, I'm sorry.
Antonellus is the old, is, is the old...
The front lit, front lit.
Yes.
Okay.
It's internally lit.
Internally lit, yeah.
Yeah, so it looks different.
It's, it's a front lit channel. Same thing, just turn it around and the light goes out the back.
Right, so it's, it's, so it's, it's white background, a wash, with letters appearing up top, right?
Um, I'll be honest with you, I, um, this is my first two there. I, I did not sit in on the first meeting. Did they, um, did they specify that it was white-lit LEDs? If it is, then she just made an error.
Yes.
Once she punched that out for me.
All the lights that we've approved for the site...
Is written.
The, the bulbs are white, so it's a white wash against, so the red letters show up instead of it being a red glow like it is now.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Because this would not achieve design unity with the rest of the signs.
Right, okay.
So what I'll do is I'll...
So with that contingency.
When do you think, when is Fixed supposed to open? Are they planning on opening?
Um, I just filed her, her application for her to submit to put up a, a small temporary sign. Um, they're still working in the building, so they need your inspection and...
I saw that.
Whatever. So I'm thinking, you know, within, within the month of March. He, they're really not doing a lot other than building a desk.
We'll put this on for the, uh...
Second?
For the March 2 meeting? I'll rewrite this one, yes, thank you.
Does it need to be a public hearing?
No.
Oh, all right. So we're just saying the decision won't be made tonight, it'll be made March 2.
Right, because I have to write the resolution for it. The resolution that was prepared was just for Fixed, that Tad wrote. And I said, I'll do the ones, if the rest of the board wants to do the two lines of text. Because like I said, I think it's fine. My only concern was, like I said, that this not be read...
I'll make sure of it, yeah.
Behind the scenes. So who has the file for Earth Goods?
That would be me. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board Resolution Recommendation for Issuance of Sign Permit Pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3, February 17, 2016, Resolution Number 16-9. Whereas, 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 be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the signed permit for Earth Goods Market as submitted by Nancy Forrest, latest revision date 1/28/2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So if you want to come back on March 2, you can, but you don't have to.
I don't, yeah, because they have to pay me every time I come, my client, so...
That's what I thought, so, yeah, don't worry.
Say that. And, um, so on that note, I'll take this opportunity to also tell you I may not see any of you again. Thank you for all your, uh, 40 years on retiring.
Oh, no.
Congratulations!
Well, from this, I'm still going to, I'm just going to do something different, you know, and part-time. But it's been a blast.
It's been a pleasure working with you.
Been a long, it's been a long time.
It's also been nice that you provided us a lot of information about signs, too.
Yes, it's made it very easy for us.
Like I said, it's, having sign professionals on our committee when we did the sign code definitely assisted us, because we were seeing all the sort of professional literature about why si, why size matters in certain, you know...
Right, it's all a formula, distance sheet.
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much.
It really is. I don't think I can ever say in all my time that I've ever just tried to go in and get a gigantic sign for, you know, just because my client wanted one. I had ones ask me to do it. And I'm like, no, I'm not going to go sit there and look stupid, you don't need it, you know? But anyway, thank you very much.
Good luck in your retirement, good luck in your retirement.
Thank you.
And that brings us to...
Back down.
Speedway!
Back over to Speedway, Speedway over.
Am I going to read the resolution? Because I'm happy to.
Resolution Classifying the Action Granting Sign Bonuses in Referring to County Planning Speedway LLC, Resolution Number will be filled in February 17, 2017. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the planning board makes the following findings effective with respect to requested sign bonuses. One, the additional size of the letters and symbols on the wall sign are appropriate given the convenience store sign's location approximately 142 feet back from the site's primary access roadway, and the gable end wall signs' location approximately 60 feet back from the primary access roadway. Two, the site is located on Route 9, a main thoroughfare with a speed limit of 45 miles per hour. The design speed of the road is such that larger letters and symbols are warranted. Three, the larger letters on the canopy signs are appropriate given the distance of the signs from the road and the size of the structure in which they'll be located. Smaller letters would appear out of proportion with the structure and be visually jarring.
We have to change canopy to gable end wall.
Thank you.
She's a little rusty herself, isn't she?
I am.
Canopy signs are not allowed.
This is what happens when I try to do something on the fly.
Let me revise that to say, three, the larger letters on the gable end wall signs are appropriate given the distance of the signs from the road and the size of the structure in which they'll be located. Smaller letters would be, appear out of proportion with the structure and be visually jarring. For the canopy signs will be clearly visible in leaf-off conditions, only clearly visible in leaf-off conditions. Be it further resolved, the board hereby grants the applicant the requested sign bonuses to permit, one, a maximum symbol height of 23 and 5 sixteenths inches and a width of 24 inches for the running S logo on the convenience store, and, two, a maximum letter height of 13 inches for the gable end wall signs.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry if I talked fast, but that's what they like me to do when I'm reading these. Speedway, seems only appropriate.
Did I, did I delete the paragraph about referring it to county planning?
You did.
I must have, okay.
And be, there, let me then amend this by saying...
Be it further resolved?
Wait, let me, okay, let me motion to add an amendment to, to have it be further resolved, that we refer this to county planning under 239N of the general municipal law. There's a second?
Second amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll clean this up.
Is he getting money?
And then we'll wait to hear back from you. You won't get back to us until you receive your variance issued to the ZBA.
So you need a second, or a motion on the amendment?
I did get a motion on the, I mean, I made the motion on the amendment myself.
Oh, I thought you, to make the...
No, he made a motion, I seconded it.
I made it myself, he seconded it, one of you seconded it.
And it was voted on?
Yeah.
But, but, yeah. I thought you make an amendment, a motion to amend, and then you...
No.
A motion to approve.
So I think it was a motion to approve the amended...
That's what I did, that's what I did, sorry. There are two ways to skin that cat. Okay, so we'll wait to hear back from you guys, once you're through the ZBA, and good... Oh, I'm with you. Before Mr. Laub leaves, how, the, the ZBA normally requests a recommendation from the planning board on the granting of variances such as this, they're required to, I think. So in advance, I could have the letter written for the next meeting if you guys think that they should get the rest of the dimensional variances.
Can I make a motion to allow our chairman to prepare a letter for the ZBA?
And I will second that motion.
Thank you! All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for me to have a little more work, but that's okay. That's as we keep saying why they pay me the big bucks of $0. So there you go.
Well, thank you very much. And even though it was a full agenda, I think everything was dispatched with great efficiency, so.
Thank you, spread that around, spread that around.
Well, I can't do that too much, because you have more work.
This is true. We, we, we wouldn't mind more work that way, believe me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda is a, the request for a site plan waiver for the same reason, it's six-floor lane, to install solar panels. We do?
Yeah. Oh, yours is old.
Oops. We have two more.
Yes.
So who has the Robinson file?
That'd be me.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution Number 16-11. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Donovan Robinson for minor changes in existing conditions requiring a building permit, and whereas, 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 whereas.[1535.02]